Which means that we do have a quorum. We are a 15-member board. We do have a few vacancies on our board, but we have 11 of our 15 seats filled at this time. We're going to be asking for volunteers a little bit later on in the meeting. And I'm going to first ask for status reports from our service providers, starting with the Honolulu Fire Department. Is anyone from the fire department here at this time? Okay, not yet. Perhaps they'll be coming to join us in a few minutes. Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, aloha. Lieutenant Taro Nakamura with the Police Department. These are stats for... Oh, you're welcome, man. These are stats for October's compared to the previous month. Motor vehicle thefts were three as compared to two. Burglaries were three as compared to zero. Thefts in general, 15 as compared to nine. And UAMVs, which is theft from autos, it was 11 compared with 30. Further statistical information can be found at HonoluluPD.org. And our safety tip for the month, we've been having a whole rash of business burglaries. So I sent you folks the handout that we have, Business Security Tips. A lot of this stuff is common sense. But one thing I do want to stress is we had a very good case last night where a business burglary did occur, and we were able to catch them. And the reason why I think we were able to catch them, not only because we were... We have active operations going on, not only in patrol, but with our plane closure units. But the owner, he had a camera system. And you know, I'm not supposed to promote any one particular brand or anything like that. But the system that they had was an online system. He could use it. He could use his cellphone. And the information that he saw the suspects in his shop, in his business, got to 911 and to the guys out on the road very, very, very quickly. So these systems are getting very inexpensive. You can buy them at, you know, a lot of the big box retailers. And I would recommend, highly recommend those kind of systems just to cut down on the response time, yeah? And we were able to arrest two out of the three guys. And I just found out that the prosecutor's office accepted the charges. So they're going to spend some time in jail, which is great because that's not the usual norm. So a little bit of good news to share with you folks. And that's my report.
All right. Are there any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Board members? Anybody from the audience? Herb, go ahead.
My question is, is where the arrests these locals or homeless?
They're local individuals. I would not say they're... What's the word? Professional homeless. They're not that type. They're more professional criminals.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Lieutenant, I have a couple of questions. We have two issues tonight that we're going to be discussing that we might need some HPD input. One has to do with considering park closure hours for the Jolukela Beach Park and maybe for Mauna Lua Beach Park. Could you explain how closure hours might help you to be able to address the problem? And why you can't vacate the homeless from that area right now?
Sure. So let me put in... I received your email, so I read up on it a little bit. Let me just throw in a disclaimer that I am only a lieutenant, so I cannot officially speak for the Police Department and make any kind of blanket statements as to whether or not HPD quote-unquote supports this or that. But what I can do is I can explain how normal processes work. Now, say, for example, park rules. Now, we've had this question. I don't want to bring up... Maybe I won't bring up any thorny issues from other areas in Hawaii Kai. But we've had other areas where there have been no signs posted. Now, if no signs are posted and it's a public park, there is a duty on the part of, I would say, the government or the law to give prior notice. So these things are... You can do at a park. These things you cannot do at a park. And whenever we make citations or arrests, the courts expect that. So if we have... Say, we cite somebody for park closure, or we may even arrest them for park closure, we almost always take a picture of the scene, and then we take pictures of the posted signs that say, "No drinking in the park." No, you know, "No parking on the grass," et cetera, et cetera. If those signs are absent, we can't... We can't enforce those laws in good faith if we know that signs should be posted. And we've had several rulings by judges that said, "Hey, the signs aren't posted. You guys shouldn't have cited." So once we're told that, you know, that good faith thing no longer applies. So it is always, I would say, almost a necessity to have proper posted... So you have... You've given people proper notice. Do notice, hey? You can't do these things at this park. This park is closed from 10 to whatever time you folks decide. So you can't be inside the park. It's just a matter of... To break it down most simply, it's just the steps in the law that should be taken for any one particular thing. So that's how it works. So that's why you will commonly hear, if that question comes up, do the police support it or not? You know, technically, I can't say, on behalf of the Police Department, we support it or we don't support it. But if you can read between the lines, you see how the system works. And that would enable the Police Department to actually enforce the park rules if it becomes a city park.
Okay, thank you. I think that question generated another question. Paige?
Good evening. Thank you so much for your report. Along those lines, a quick question. How do the rules of a park being closed? How are those enforced? I know at Kulea O Beach Park, which does have a beach closure sign on it, that there are still people sleeping at the park and fishing at the park. And I know that the fishing is a big trigger. But how do the park closures work if the park, it does have a closure, let's say, at 10 o'clock? What are the parameters surrounding that?
You could just... If it's after the park closure hours, you can just call 911 and an officer will respond. Given the time of day or whatever circumstances for that evening, they might ask that person to leave instead of giving a citation or making an arrest. But it all depends on that situation for that evening. But if the signs are posted, it gives the Police Department a means to enforce some rules if that becomes necessary. Of course, we don't... We want voluntary compliance on everything. We don't want to become a society where we just tag and arrest everybody once somebody makes a call. But if we gain voluntary compliance, that's great. If we don't, we'll just cite them and move on to the next thing.
So that means that if there's a sign and the park closes at 10 o'clock, that means that it is closed to everybody?
Yes.
Everybody?
So it can... What's the way of putting it? Yeah, it's closed to everybody. That's the only politically correct way to say it. Yeah.
Thank you. But we could request, for example, signs that say, "No overnight camping" as opposed to park closure. I mean, it depends on, you know, how we manage the signage, I guess. Because I understand from the City Council Chair's office that the beaches are open all the time to the public.
That's correct.
So access to the beach is allowed. And even if it's through a park, that would still be allowed.
That's correct. There is some tricky issues that have a lot of history behind it, actually. It goes way back before Hawaii was even a state. But yeah, all those things you mentioned are correct. And then as a neighborhood board, you can make suggestions to the parks, whatever suggestions you want, whether they take them or not. Because they usually have standard signage. But, I mean, you're a neighborhood board. You can make any resolution that you want and try it. And you know, who knows? Maybe if it's a really good idea, they'll say, "Hey, yeah, maybe we should change the standard signs and put that item on the signage also." So...
I just want to assure everybody in the audience also that this doesn't mean that fishermen cannot access the beach because they can. And so that they can go to the beach and put their poles in the water if they do night fishing. So just wanted to clarify that.
I just asked him that.
Yep.
And he said, "Everyone."
No, Kim, that's why I'm...
I'm Paige, not Kim.
Sorry.
And that's why I just asked him that flat-out question was, "Does that mean everyone?"
No.
Okay, so it doesn't mean everyone?
Right.
Okay, so fishermen are always... They're always opted out of that. You can close the beaches, but fishermen are allowed?
No, anybody can access the beach.
Right.
The sand.
Yes, I understand that.
Right, so if it means traversing through a park, that would be allowed?
Right, but that wasn't the question that I asked.
There's a question from Kim online. Go ahead, Kim.
Hi, so it's recently been brought to my attention once again regarding the issues along the Ka'eevi coastline, specifically Malka of Vavimalu and Sandies regarding the homeless that we have in there. But not only homeless, they're criminals, burglars, as well as arsonists. And with the recent fire that happened in that area, I have to say that a lot of neighbors contacted me and were very worried because of the dry conditions that another Lahaina could happen right here in Kalama Valley. So I've been looking into it. I asked Tommy Waters. I asked Jean Ward and some people to do another walkthrough with me because after last year's with Mr. Nikoa and myself, it seemed to get some attention. We got boulders put up. The vans and cars that were used as homes in there and shelters for these people were taken out. And it was fairly well taken care of until recently. And then again, recently now, we've had them moved back in. So the problem is not the signage because signs were erected over a year ago. But it seems to me that enforcement has been lacking. And don't get me wrong, I love HPD and everything you do. And I know you guys have so much on your plate. But how can we increase enforcement with this area to maintain some kind of control on who is going in there, who is making camp? There's a lot of stolen items that are in there right now. Bikes, things from tourist cars. And just my neighbors last night had their rims stolen off of their cars that one of them ended up in there. So I know that Mr. Waters is meeting with DPR and HDF and I think the Parks Department tomorrow. But I would like to, you know, bring it up that we really need to get some kind of enforcement. And I am all for whoever is Kala, whatever, Kavaioa. I am all for the houseless and having them rest their heads, which I believe Honolulu and the city and county and Hawaii as a state does a very good job of offering these people places to go. So don't get on me about houseless and homeless with the variety of these people being burglars, arsonists, and people that are up to no good because there are stolen items everywhere in there. And they are trespassing. How can we get more enforcement to this area, please?
Thank you, Kim. Lieutenant, any response or...?
Well, that has been an ongoing issue, not only in Vavimalu, but I would say island-wide. We face the same issues at Diamond Head with the homeless people up in the valleys, in Palolo, in Inahaina, in Manoa. If you go out to the west side, I worked out in District 8 and D8 for a while. And I can tell you that the situation is probably 1,000 times worse than the east side. So we try to manage the situation as best that we can do given the constrictions that we are bound by, sometimes with jurisdiction-type issues and homelessness. That is a really difficult point. I mean, you mentioned in the... While you were talking, you were saying there were arsonists and this and that. They're not arsonists, but then they still commit crimes, and there's a lot of... So it is a very thorny issue that we have to go through and assess with each new case, each new call that comes out. We have to assess that individually. We can't say as a group, "These types of people are committing this or that." You know, that's a tough one.
Okay, Lieutenant.
I wasn't trying to stereotype. I was merely saying that the people in there are the theft that is going on in Kalama Valley. Because it's funny and ironic that they're not just homeless and houseless. The stolen goods and items are actually ending up in their camps. They are also trespassing, which we had signs erected for this exact reason. So it's not that I'm picking on one group and saying, "Oh, all the houseless and the homeless in there, all this, all that." I'm saying fires have occurred, burglaries have occurred. Now, there's trespassing through Queens Gate into Kalama Valley, and there's more burglaries. Arson has occurred. I don't know how much more we have to have go wrong before we do, you know, catch Kalama Valley on fire. And I get that the west side is worse, but then they should speak up even louder. And that's all I'm doing, bringing it to your attention so that maybe something can be done because we've been fighting this now for a long time, like you said. And I just wanted to know how we can get more information to the Police Department and whoever else so that we can enforce these boundaries, that we can get the people that are in there that need help, help, that we can move them into the tiny home village or medical help like we did a year ago. I'm not trying to stereotype anything.
All right, thank you, Kim. I do have one other question, Lieutenant. It has to do with City Council Bills 57 and 58 that we will be considering later in the meeting. Are you familiar with those bills? They are designed to deter the illegal gaming houses on Oahu. Are you familiar with that? If you're not, it's okay.
I'm personally not familiar with the actual bills themselves, but I do know in general that there are certain bills that were proposed. And I believe the question you sent me in your email was if I knew of any illegal houses out in the Hawaii Kai area. So I did ask around. And in the Hawaii Kai area, at least I'm not personally aware of any game rooms in the Hawaii Kai area. And perhaps Sergeant Hong can answer that question also, if he knows of any. But I haven't heard of anything.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Thank you, gentlemen.
If I could mention one thing, though, those game rooms, you know... I would, if you're a neighborhood board, I would do everything and anything you can to try to prevent those kinds of, quote-unquote, businesses from plotting down in your neighborhood because they're just... They just attract all sorts of people, wrong people. And it's going to flood out and affect the neighboring businesses and neighborhoods. That's a guarantee. So anything and everything that we can do to prevent those things from happening is, I would say, a good thing. But again, I'm just a lieutenant, so I can't change the world. I'm just responsible for the people, that same amount of people that we've had for years. And we respond to the calls.
All right, thank you very much. We do have another question for you. Go ahead, introduce yourself and...
Cynthia Simmons, and I have three quick questions. Thank you. We all appreciate what you do. I just... Yes, we all appreciate what you do, Lieutenant. I have three quick questions. For transparency, you cited restrictions dealing with the homeless. Could you tell us what those restrictions are?
I'm sorry?
Earlier, you said you had restrictions on dealing with the homeless. What are those restrictions?
So homelessness in and of itself is not a crime. So we can't say... I would never say homelessness is a crime. If a call is made to 911, we have to address what the complaint is and determine whether there's any criminal element or not. So it starts from there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then you said that you can cite them if they're in the park when the park's supposed to be closed, correct?
Yeah, but I wasn't referring specifically to homeless. That's only to people who are violating... Yeah, who are violating any kind of park rules. So, yeah, the most common park rules that we have are usually people drinking in the park. So if you take that as an example, it might be a homeless person or it might not be a homeless person. It might be a normal individual. Not "normal" individual. That's a terrible way of saying things. It might be somebody else that's just at the park drinking or their friends after a game or whatnot. We will enforce those rules if a complaint is made. That's all I'm trying to say.
And that's fine. I don't really need a distinction between homeless and any other activity there. But if you're citing them, that doesn't include making them leave the park, does it?
No, they're supposed to leave the park.
So if you cite them, you actually have them leave the park as well?
During the park hours, yes. But once 6:01 or whatever time comes around, the park is open to everyone.
And so after park hours, you will escort them out of the park?
We can... So this is where it gets tricky. Yes, the individual, yes. The items, maybe not. That's where it becomes difficult.
I understand, but the individuals themselves, if they're there when the park is closed and someone calls it in, you can't escort them out?
Yeah, we're going to cite them and tell them you can't be in the park.
Well, I guess I'm not being clear. I understand the citation is a ticket. You actually physically remove them?
We're not going to use force to physically remove somebody from the park. 99.9% of the time, they're just going to leave the park. So if you want me to... If you want a blanket statement from me saying that we're going to physically escort everybody out of parks at night...
I'm not asking for you to do anything specifically. I just would like to understand what does happen? What is the process? What we can expect? That's all I'm asking.
And that's the answer that I'm giving you.
Okay.
Depending on the situation, we'll assess whether or not an actual crime had occurred. And we'll deal with the... We'll deal from there.
Why don't you just force them out physically?
Cynthia, are you done with your questions?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
It's unhoused. They're second-list reformal.
I'd like to thank Lieutenant Hong and... Excuse me, Lieutenant Nakamura and Sergeant Hong for being here tonight. Thank you very much. We bypassed the Honolulu Fire Department, and we're going to ask them to come up and give their report first so that they can get back out on the streets. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Jay Norrie, Captain here, Second Watch, Engine 30. Quick one. So this was written in the beginning of November, so it also includes Thanksgiving incidents that may have. So as I read here, incident statistics for October, there was one structured fire. There were seven activated fire alarms, 96 medical calls, four motor vehicle collisions, one mountain rescue, one ocean rescue, and a hazmat incident. The fire safety tips and announcements for holiday cooking safety. Keep everyone safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is the peak day for home cooking fires and more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve rank second and third. With both having nearly twice the daily average, unattended cooking is by far the leading contributing factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. Stay in the kitchen and focus on the food when you are cooking on the stove top. Stay in the home when cooking your turkey and check on it frequently. If you want a fried turkey, purchase it from a grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does not use oil. Turkey fryers that use cooking oil are not safe. Friers use large amounts of oil at high temperatures, which can cause devastating burns. Consider purchasing an infrared fryer, air fryer, or electric turkey fryer that has been listed by a qualified testing laboratory. Do not leave fryers unattended.
Thank you, Captain. Are there questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Greg, go ahead.
Hi, we have an ongoing situation originating around Sandies with fireworks going off just frequently, you know, several times a week. And we just heard one board member think that it might be homeless in the area just Malka of Vavimalu Beach that would be responsible. But I don't believe there's any evidence or proof of that. I would rather suspect that it's fireworks that happen very often. The fire that did start there was on Kealaho right at the base by the first bus stop, just right down by the stoplights. So that isn't an area where there are any homeless encampments or anything. So my question is, does the Fire Department have any authority to act on that, knowing that that could be a real hazard? The police don't seem to be able to arrest people illegally lighting fireworks. So I just wonder, do you have any authority? Or would you have to call in the police? Or do you take any level of active interest in preventing fires starting from fireworks?
So I want to understand, does the Fire Department, like firefighters like myself, have authority to arrest somebody that has... I see you lighting the firework, and do I have authority right then?
You just gave us tips on how to prevent certain fires. So you have an active interest in prevention. Has there ever been a discussion on perhaps the Fire Department also having a role in preventing the illegal use of fireworks? Yeah, the conditions are so dry, and they were, you know, a few weeks ago, that it could very well have been from members from a firework landing in that spot where a fire did start.
Oh, people are lighting fireworks in front of their house. At Kalama Valley, they're lighting fireworks right inside the park themselves? And do I have the authority to arrest or...
Okay, forget the authority business because, no, that's HPD. You work with HPD.
HPD is the authority.
As part of your prevention effort, you work with HPD to get that under control. And yes, it happens down in the Kalama Valley Park. It happens on someone's house just a couple of doors down from a police officer. Nothing seems to be done. But most recently, I saw the fireworks going up from Sandy Beach. I've heard it and experienced it several times, so I know that that's the area. And with regard to the fire that was just referenced, I would say that's probably fireworks-related.
So if you see fireworks being ignited, you can call 911. Fire Department and Police Department would come together. Enforcement would come with HPD. As far as our prevention education, like neighborhood board and our messages that are broadcast on the social media. So we're trying to reach the community in social media a lot, as well as on television, commercials. So you may have seen those things. We move now, if there's people who want to... They have illegal fireworks or any type of fireworks. They can bring it to certain fire stations. As far as like bringing it, but as far as capturing somebody that's... As far as like bringing it, but as far as capturing somebody that's trying to educate and encourage not to blow fireworks because it can be devastating, extremely devastating.
So Captain, if you see it happening, can you tell them to stop and can you report it? So that they might be cited?
I would just tell them to stop. And if I could, I'm going to be calling on my dispatch for HPD assistance and heavily encourage enforcement and really do our best because we're trying to encourage leadership amongst our community. Want people to take ownership of the community. That takes about looking out for each other. And that's our message to everyone we come into. This is your community right here. We want you to be leaders and if you see it, report it. And if you see your friends doing it, talk to them about a better story. You already understand how communities can be devastated and instate on it.
Thank you very much, Captain. Any other questions, Honolulu Fire Department? All right, thank you very much for being here. Next is the Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda. Thank you for being here.
Have a general announcement. It's the Board of Water Supply. We've launched our 2024 poster and poetry contests. Poster contest is open for grades K through six. And the poetry contest is open for grades seven to 12. And this year's theme is our water, our home. And the deadline to enter is February 28th, 2024. So go to boardofwatersupply.com/wcwcontests. So water conservation contest. And I do report on main breaks. So there was one main break in October, on October 12th, near 1148 Kahului Street, which is in Kalama Valley. And we are aware of the main breaks in the Kalama Valley area. I do have a project, or we do have a project in design and it's actually tentative construction start date is in March of 2024. So that's our Kalama Valley Water System Improvement Project. So we did want to let you know that we are aware of the main breaks in Kalama Valley and we're sorry, but, and we are working to fix them, change it out. If there's any questions?
Questions, Board of Water Supply, Herb, and then Greg?
Thank you for coming. You guys, the Board of Water Supply handles the fire hydrants. Am I correct?
Public roads, public road rates, yes.
Yes, okay, I have a fire hydrant that is, looks new and it's put up, it's got four cones around it and it's been missing. I guess they're waiting to go put the cement or they forgot about it completely. And yeah, I can give you the addresses in front of and the hydrant number. Okay, the hydrant number is 6226. It's fronting 1135 A Wayneha Street.
Thank you, I'll send that over.
It's been like that for quite a while.
One, okay. Thank you, thanks for letting us know.
Hey, Representative Board had forwarded something to me about the water main breaks in Kalama Valley. And someone said they might appear tonight. Are they here? If so, then I will relay that, that yes, there was some major concern. Say we have another Kalama Valley Improvement Project starting in March of 2024. And of course, I consider that sort of a joke that I have been bringing up the issues of water main breaks or the broken connectors and how the streets are all torn up. Representative Board, I'm not sure, was it on Keala Ho or Honaka Hua? The constituent that contacted you? No, that's mine. Kai Lake who has some 30 patches on it in the last few years from each one being done individually, more than 30. The next street down, Honaka Hua has probably another 15 to 20. I think this specific complaint might have been with Keala Ho, which also is bad. And there's another section of Kalama Valley that is awfully prone to these water main breaks. But Board of Water Supply has been saying for many years now that they're going to address that and fix it. And it just hasn't happened. So how can you tell us that again right now when it has not been fulfilled for so many years?
I'm sorry, I know you've been telling, you've mentioned this before in the neighborhood board that I've been coming to for those couple of years. It does take time for assessing it. We do have to do the design, this environmental design work. Now it's into construction. So it is slated for construction around, it's March of 2024. So I'm sorry that it took a while to get it done, but we do need to combine projects to get all the locations together. Large projects like this to help save the costs also. So sorry for the inconvenience during those times, but we are getting this project moving forward.
And I would just ask, if there are plans, you're saying it's taken all this time for planning. Can you share that with this neighborhood board?
Design plans that you do?
Whatever, some kind of summary of where the work is going to be done. We've had this before and it just didn't happen.
Sorry.
So the updated, yeah, maps and scope of work. It doesn't have to be your full detailed plans, but it would be helpful to have it.
Sure, I reported it before, so sorry I didn't bring the same maps again. So I will bring it next January.
Questions from Elizabeth and then Paige?
Many, many months ago, the Board of Water Supply was doing some work in Kamilinui Valley, more towards the entrance specifically in an area known as Olawatus. And they left a very large piece of the pipe that they took out and replaced. And I think it was intentionally left there to create a block so that nobody would go in that area. But it's still there and it's just, it's a visible blight and it will start to attract additional opala. And it's a very large pipe. Otherwise, I would have removed it myself. So I wanted to mention that to you.
Do you know like a street name?
It would be referred to as Kamilinui Place. K A M I L O Place. Of course, please, of course.
Hi, thank you, Iris. So I'm bothered by the fact that every single month, it seems like, I mean, I don't know. Greg could answer this more than I could, but every single month it seems that there's a water main break in Kalama Valley. There's a lot of people that live in Kalama Valley. There's a lot of roads in Kalama Valley, but there's constant water main breaks there. And my question to the BOW is, what is it going to take? I mean, how, how many water main breaks do there have to be in a community of that size before you guys go in and say, look, we just need to rehaul these pipes? They're old, they're obvious. I mean, it's patchwork over patchwork over patchwork. And it's, and it's, it's hard on the residents. It's really difficult on the residents. It's difficult on the BOW. It's got to cost more in the long run for you guys to continue to patch and patch and patch and patch than it is for you to just do the construction and fix the pipes. Replace them, whatever you have to do. But whatever you guys have been doing ain't working. Because the people in Kalama Valley are still bothered by water main breaks and still have to deal with them every single month. They're dealing with the water main break. And then they're dealing with the residual and the fallout from all of that. So I would, I would beg the BOW to actually take a look at this community and come up with something better than we're starting some construction eight months from now. Because it's gotten to a point or whatever, March, what is that, three, four, five months from now? Sorry, but it doesn't matter. I mean, because between now and then, there are going to be another five or six water main breaks.
And we understand that there's main breaks in the area because there's actually high pressures in the area.
Yeah.
That was there from the developer. So we're actually looking to do something to help reduce the pressures in the area also.
I think maybe you guys should sit down and really start to do something to fix it. Instead of patch, instead of band-aiding, sit down and, sit down and fix it. Not just this project, I'm talking about all of Kalama Valley. Because this is, it's way out, yeah, it's way out of control.
Okay, all right. We look forward to that project starting. All right, couple of questions from the audience. Go ahead.
How's it? My name is Kalau Nakua. I got a question brought up to my attention that the Board of Water Supply is going to be raising our prices. And part of it is because of inflation, electricity costs. And the biggest pain in the butt is the Red Hill situation. So now the community is going to suffer and going to eat the cost because of what happened with the military and the Red Hill tanks. Now it's going to get, we're going to get higher bill because of that. So why is the BWS not going after the military instead of the community?
So it was announced, I haven't heard, I actually didn't see the news myself, but it was announced that we do have a request into the military for reimbursement. Got what the number, dollar amount was for? 1.2 billion, thank you. So we are looking to get reimbursed by the military or at least some kind of, some kind of payment. But we can't wait for their payment and so we do need to move forward to look for replacement sources. And anything, even to bring the transmission mains down, the water down to the locations that we had to shut down water. So we are looking to get reimbursement, but definitely a lot of the cost is also from water, electric rates rising. Just stuff like you said, inflation, things like that. So, but we are looking to get reimbursed, that we just need to move forward.
So is the BWS looking to get reimbursed? Or is the community going to get reimbursed when the Navy gives back that 1.2 billion dollars?
So yes, we're looking to get reimbursed and that will help us pay for what we had to expend. And at the, and whenever that happens, we have the rate structure that we requested this rate increase for was for six years. So over the six years, we're going to have a rate increase slowly over the six years. At that time, in the fifth or sixth year, we're going to come back out to the public. Well, we're going to do another rate study at that time. See if we got the money from the feds or the government, federal government. We also have, we're actually having a lot of projects right now that we were supposed to construct that we're having to put on the side because of, we're having to put more into sources. So in six years, we're trying to catch up probably on pipelines. But we will evaluate the rate, the cost of water at that time and what we can get back. And we don't have to raise rates then, that'd be great. And as a great parent myself, I would like that too. So, but yeah, no, we would just look to see what we got at the time. If hopefully we don't have to raise rates, but I can't say that we're not going to do it and at the, in the future. But we will look to get the money back, put back into the coffer.
Okay. All right.
Can you tell everyone what the percentage is going to be for the rates?
Sorry, I didn't bring my papers with me today. 64 overall in the six months, six years, but it's a smaller amount every year. I mean, it's a, a certain amount every year that totals to 64%. So if I remember something, like if you ever won a $30 or $50 bill, it might be around, you know, 70 something. So it's the water side that's going up. We can't control the other side.
Iris, could you bring back a little more detail on the, on the price hikes?
Yeah.
At next month's meeting?
Yeah, in January.
Oh, excuse me, yes, January, yes.
Sorry, I forgot to bring the paper this time.
All right, another question?
So one of a follow-up to the previous question. My name is John Patterson and I'm from Spender River Isle. I woke this morning to the report of what I consider to be abusive rate increases. Aging islanders, of which I proudly claim myself to be one, are particularly vulnerable to increases in nondiscretionary expenses. Certainly, our incomes don't go up anything near 64% for six years. In fact, when inflation is considered, most aging Americans find that their income is decreasing. I'd like to know what is the avenue by which we can contest possibly get first? I have a follow-up question. Okay. Over the last several years, the government of the islands has been addressing the question of housing and one of its answers has been to encourage ADU or multiple family housing. That places those that are single metered in a position where both their electrical rates and their water rates are now subject to the escalation clauses that charge you more per gallon water the more you consume. So we have one arm of the government encouraging us to try to provide additional housing and a somewhat related arm of government, I'm going to call you. Penalizing us for doing so. Do you have any plans to look at the question of multiple family dwellings and trying to adjust the rate structure to accommodate the policy which has been encouraged us to follow?
I'll just ask for, just, you mentioned about the avenue to contest the rate increase. I believe the meeting was last yesterday when it was approved. I will have to check if there's any avenue to say anything after the fact at this point. So I will have to report on that in January, if there's an avenue to contest this rate increase. Please go up to the mic. She's making the special rate for the elderly.
Can I just get the presentation from Board of Water Supply about the rate increase? Oh, I'm here, Lanisunora Pale. I'm with the Kulioo Kalaniiki Board, Neighborhood Board. We got a presentation about the rate increase a couple of months ago. It was pretty thorough and I believe it was mentioned for those that are on fixed incomes that there will be, you won't get the 60% rate increase. That there would be some kind of, I think you would have to apply for it. But, you know, there will be some kind of relief for those on fixed incomes. So, yeah, that's what I believe.
Okay, so Iris, if you might bring that information back to us in January?
On that, so, yeah, I don't want to speak that if it is true or not. But yeah, so the rate structure was set up though for the lower users to, it is that the lower users and the fixed income people and things like that, low use users, smaller homes, older people, older households, they tend to use lesser water. So they're actually being subsidized by the higher user and companies, hotels, you know, businesses. So that is how we're helping with the fixed income and the lower income people like that. And then I'll have to follow up on your multifamily question about it, how the impact to the rate is for them as they are increasing their size and their amount of usage because they're trying to have multifamilies in the dwelling. Have to ask that question and see.
Okay, so a lot of follow-up for our next January meeting. One last question, Elizabeth?
Actually, I was just going to, there's a really cool statistic that you guys have and I thought maybe you can share it in January. And it's the one proactive measure that Board of Water Supply is doing as it responds to replacement of pipes throughout the island. And I thought that the community might be interested in knowing how many miles of pipe Board of Water Supply is responsible for. I don't remember the statistic, but it's a fascinating number. And then you actually have a goal on how much every year you want to replace. And that's sort of that proactive step to try to get ahead of those water main breaks. And I just kind of thought that the community would appreciate that good work.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, it's about 2,100 miles of mains. And our goal was 21 miles to replace it and to be proactive. That's what we try to do, but that's partly is it's going to change a little bit because our emphasis is going towards source development to help replace the Red Hill. So.
Thank you very much, Iris. We appreciate you being here and we look forward to your follow-up report in January. Okay, members of the audience, we have only gotten through our, excuse me, we still have one more status report. I'm going to be trying to move the meeting along a little bit faster because we have lots to cover on our agenda tonight. And we've already gone through almost an hour of meeting. So the last of our status reports, we're going to hear from Principal Shannon Gu about the Kaiser Complex schools. Welcome, Mr. Gu, and thank you for allowing us to be here.
Of course, thank you and good evening. Wanted to present on some of the great things happening in our Kaiser complex of schools. First of all, big mahalo to Alliance Club who coordinated the Hawaii Kai Holiday Parade. It was a good way for all of our schools to get out there and see the public, see our faces, our staff, our families. And it was just a great gathering event, so mahalo to them. them. Also, one important fact about all of our complex schools, we're international baccalaureate, but we have a consistent mission to create a better and more peaceful world. And so every month you're gonna see some events that do that for us. So for Kaiser High School, they sent 12 delegates of their students to model United Nations. So it's kinda like United Nations but practice, but they were represented well and we also had some people who had honorable mention and I listed that in some of the notes, but a great job to the Cougars. Also, New Valley, they do anything big or small, this one is small, but it also impacts the community. They're doing a Waimea Ala Beach cleanup and it's gonna be Saturday, December 9th from 9 to 11, so please come out and join them. On top of that, all of our elementary schools are gonna begin this or next month starting their research projects. These are not just projects, but these are student groups or individuals who are doing research to impact the community and so they wanna do something to take action. Part of that is reaching out to industry experts and community members to be able to be part of that project. So that's the call-out to you guys. In my notes and at the minutes, I'm gonna include a link so that you can sign up to be a community mentor. It's a great way to get involved and see our young talent coming out. And you know what? I believe all of these issues that we're talking about here were represented in last year's exhibition projects, the students, and I know their voice speaks loudly. So if you're involved with that, I know we can make a difference together. Final one, I just wanna shout out to, and we are, we are coordinating the Honolulu District Science and Engineering Fair and that's gonna be on Saturday, February 17th. We need judges and so if you have a science background, please considering, consider signing up for that and please share with your friends and colleagues if they have a science background. We'd love to have you as part of the judging, judging crew that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gu. Are there questions from the audience or from the board members? All right.
Right, thank you so much.
Great report, thank you so much for sharing. We're gonna be moving on to number three on our agenda, which has to do with seeing if there are volunteers to fill our vacancies. I mentioned earlier that we are a 15-member board, only 11 of our seats are filled, which means that we have four vacancies. We have a vacancy in subdistricts 2, 3, 9, and 1 at-large seat. Subdistrict 2 is Marina Central, subdistrict 3 is Haha Ioni Valley, and subdistrict 9 is Luna Lilo Park Makai, Makai of Luna Lilo Home Road. Are there volunteers for, first of all, I'm gonna go by subdistricts first, is there anybody for subdistrict 2, 3, or 9 who would like to be considered, to be appointed? Okay, subdistrict 2, both of you for subdistrict 2? All right, come on up and tell us who you are and why we should consider you to fill one of these seats.
I live in Spinnaker Isle and have lived there since 2005. I feel like I know the neighborhood well. My background-
Excuse me, John, could you give your address to-
Yes, 812 Kumukahi Place.
Kumukahi?
Kumukahi.
Okay, he will check your eligibility, okay? Go ahead, sorry.
My degrees are both in electrical engineering, masters from Purdue. I have spent my career in the energy field, a field which I believe is particularly apropos to the issues that are addressed Hawaii. I've been on many environmental task forces as part of my employment. I'm now fully retired and have an ample amount of time to share with the board and with the community. Thank you.
All right, another applicant? Yes, no?
Can you hear me okay? I'm from Ko'apa Isle. I don't have such fancy degrees, I'm not an engineer, but my son is. So I'm gonna take that because I paid for that. But we, so I'm not from Hawaii.
So I wanted to know what is the number, just one, the number one issue that you find that is, needs to be addressed, maybe the biggest issue in Hawaii Kai? And then also what is your agenda by being on the board?
Let me ask, answer the second of the questions first. My agenda is very modest. I'd like to do what it's part. As far as the number one issue, question I haven't given a lot of thought to frankly, I see a rainbow of issues. I don't know that any one of them takes forefront. Certainly traffic flow has been discussed in a number of meetings that I've been present to and certainly homeless is one that, that the encounter within the island as a whole. Finance is, is very high. It affects us all, not uniquely. But, you know, I think that, that everybody from my age down is straining in one way or another due to things that affect us from a cost standpoint. I'm very sensitive to that.
Number one, power outages, HECO power outages, the conduits at our, my street for example has multiple power outages every single week. So we're working with HECO on that, so that's one. Number two is piping.
Yeah, just, just one.
Oh.
I just wanted, just the one.
Then if I'm gonna say just one, it's pipes, piping.
Okay, and what is your agenda by being on the board?
For this particular board, I'm working with, well, I'm a little nervous and you seem kind of intense, so I'm sorry that you're, you know, I'm just gonna call it when I see it, you know, like, I, I don't have an agenda. I live here and I see that there's HECO problems, I see that there's piping problems and our seawall is a major issue that only Ko'apa Isle is, is saving money for at this point. So I would say there's three issues that are affecting Hawaii Kai in addition to the things that you folks have already brought up. So what's my agenda? I mean, I don't have to do this, I've got a lot of things to do. I'm willing to bring my time here because I think these are important enough things that are going on and there's only a few of you, there's, there's a lot happening, you can't always be here, you need more hands on the problem, that's it. No agenda, except to help.
Any other questions? Yes, Greg?
Yeah, I've always been proud that this board has fought to have planned development, not anti-development, but just with living within the zoning practical limits that we do have and one issue that we've been facing again is to possibly convert preservation land to development, residential or business. So I would like to ask each of you, how would you vote on something like that? And this isn't legal for us to ask each other, but I can ask a member of the community.
I, I wanna, what did you say? You wanna convert-
Is there any circumstance in which you would think that preservation land, zone, preservation land should be converted to residential or business development?
I don't know about that, but I do think like what they're doing up by the hygienic store, like Rindanava is doing up there where they're using the lands to, to plant, feed the community, I think that's a good idea, but changing it into a business?
Okay, so I am talking specifically about preservation land within the Hawaii Kai area, our jurisdiction, whether we should fight to preserve preservation land?
I thought you said to turn it into a business.
Well, that's what I am saying.
Yeah, no, I-
But I'm not, I'm asking what your position would be, is there any circumstances? Okay, thank you.
Raise what I would call a conundrum and that is the islands are faced with increasing population and yet a desire to retain what makes Hawaii great and that's its outdoor spaces, its, its recreation, all the things that make Hawaii such a special place. I hesitate to say how I'd vote on that because, you know, every day the complexity changes. Right now, my answer would be, don't touch it, you know, one inch because preserving our open spaces is so critical.
Do you realize that if you are elected tonight, you will be asked to make a position and stand on that very question?
And I will make it when I, you know, when I'm presented with, with the arguments. I don't claim to have all the answers, I do claim to be a good listener and I will listen to the people that are experts in it and make my decision based on that.
All right, we're gonna be moving on. Let me explain what we're gonna be doing. We are blessed tonight with two candidates. Normally we have zero candidates who want to volunteer to serve on the board and so I hate to turn any volunteer away, so I'd like to tell the people, whoever is not selected tonight, we may have an opportunity for other positions to become open and we would like you certainly not to go away disappointed, but be willing to maybe come back when there's another seat available, okay? Now, board members, the process, we are going to have to decide between two very viable candidates. Then when we have selected one of the candidates, we will have to take another vote because for a member to be appointed to this board, it will require eight votes, our, our super quorum, okay? So I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Lyndon to call for a roll call vote and you will say the name, either Lyons for Holly Lyons, or you can say Holly Lyons, or John Patterson, all right? Oh, and Kim, online, would you please put your camera on to vote?
I'm sorry, I cannot, it won't work, but we didn't, everybody online didn't get to hear Holly Lyons speak, it was, we had technical difficulties during that time.
No, no, we, we cut everything off. I believe, you didn't have her say, you didn't hear her say anything in the beginning or?
Only that her son has an engineering degree, that's it, and then it cut off the entire time.
Oh.
No video, no audio.
Do you feel that you are, you have not received enough information to be able to make a vote?
I did not have enough information, no.
Okay, Holly, would you please just tell us, tell Kim a little bit more about yourself, just repeat it? Okay, Kim, our neighborhood assistant has indicated that you will not be able to vote if you cannot turn your camera on. So we're gonna just have to go ahead with who's here at, at the board table, all right? Okay, so Lyndon, would you please call for the roll call vote?
Okay, before I start, are there any nominations for the position of subdistrict 2? Technically you need to be nominated by a board member before you get on.
I will nominate Holly Lyons.
Any other nominations for subdistrict 2?
I nominate John Patterson.
Now we have two nominations, are there other nominations? Yeah, nominations are closed. So I have two nominations for subdistrict 2. We have John Patterson and Holly Lyons. I'll start with the people who's here currently and you must state the name of the person that you want to fill the position. Paige Alton.
John Patterson.
Greg Newton.
Holly Lyons.
Elijah Lee. Elizabeth Riley.
Holly Lyons.
Herb Shiner.
John Patterson.
Lee Sylvia Knott.
Holly Lyons.
Samuel Wolf.
John Patterson.
Kim Hollensworth. Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. And Roberta Mayer.
Your sister.
Holly Lyons.
About getting on too.
I have five for Holly Lyons and three for John Patterson. It's not enough.
They're on it.
I think they're at it.
No, she was trying to get on online.
Julie?
Yeah.
Will people online, please mute yourself? All right, we've narrowed the field down to one candidate and we're going to have to vote on the one candidate. So Lyndon, would you call the roll again?
Not sure that, I don't think that's the policy. You would have to do a revote. There's no-
Our neighborhood assistant has indicated that we're going to have to vote again, you're going to have to give one of the two names, Patterson or Lyons, and, all right, John Patterson is going to withdraw, but I don't want you to run away. I'd like you to be available if another seat becomes vacant. It does not have to be in your subdistrict, it could be an at-large seat, okay? All right, so at this point we have one candidate, so we're going to be calling for a roll call vote again. Lyndon, please.
We have one candidate, Holly Lyons for subdistrict 2, Paige Alton.
Abstain.
I'm Greg Newton. Elijah Lee. Roberta Mayer. Elizabeth Riley.
Lyons.
Herb Shiner.
Lyons.
I'm Lee Sylvia Knott.
Lyons.
And Samuel Wolf.
Lyons.
Seven for Lyons and one abstention.
We can go to a third round if we think that there's gonna be a change in vote, otherwise we're gonna have to carry this over to January. We do need eight votes to appoint someone to the board. All right, we're going to a third round of voting. You're gonna have to state, okay, make it fast.
So Holly Lyons for subdistrict 2, Paige Alton.
Lyons.
Greg Newton. Elijah Lee. Roberta Mayer. Elizabeth Riley. Herb Shiner.
Lyons.
Lee Sylvia Knott.
Lyons.
Samuel Wolf.
Lyons.
We have eight votes, congratulations.
Congratulations, Holly. So Holly, if you would come on up here, Lyndon will swear you in and we'll seat you at either end of the table, all right? Are there any volunteers for subdistricts 3 or 9? All right, maybe next month or in January we'll see someone. Are there any volunteers for our 1 at-large seat? Would you please come up to the podium?
Good evening. My name is Joel Brilliant. My wife, Elizabeth, and I moved here after retiring in California about 2015, 2016. And we've been residents at 706 Kalani Poo Street since. My wife was born and raised here as a Sacred Hearts Academy grad, went to UH and graduated San Diego State. Somewhere along the way, we met each other. And when I decided I was done with California and asked her where she wanted to spend the rest of our life together, she said, well, I just want to go back home. And here we are, back home. My education is a bachelor's degree in math and engineering, a master's degree in international business. Spent 31 years with the Navy. Became a Navy captain, predominantly in the Navy Special Warfare Operations. And then another career for about 20 years with Semper Energy as a project manager in construction and operations. In 2016, we decided not to work any longer, but to be totally unemployed and enjoy life. And here we are. I have been on various nonprofit and professional boards for most of my life. I've been on a couple of neighborhood boards. I understand importance. Those were back in California. I am on a couple of boards here in Hawaii. One, earners' code, homeowners' association, and also the Military Order of Purple Heart. And I'm the state guy in charge. Currently volunteering with the Oahu Veterans Council and the Wounded Warriors Ohana, which is local. My pledges. Agree it's important to know where I stand, what I would vote for, or at least how my brain is wired. And I wrote that down ahead of time to support existing planning and code regulations where they promote local residential use without encroaching on the personal rights of others. To encourage local law enforcement of housing, vehicle, and noise offenses, and penalties assessed. To support respectful and safe use of open public spaces. And to object to misuse or wasteful expenditures of public resources. Pretty much a conservative approach to life. And I'm open for questions.
Are there any other volunteers for the at-large position? Would you please come on up? When it rains, it pours.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Joel, for your service. I'm a return candidate, Stacy Martin. I've lived in Hawaii now 30 years. And I think to know my intention is to tell a story. I lived, I moved here 30 years ago from Queens, New York. And from the first time I arrived as a single female, I never in my life felt safe as I did here. I never encountered such an authentic friendliness of the people compared to Queens, New York. That was powerful for me because I came with a stun gun and mace in my purse. I then had a child, have two children. And I was a single mom and my native Hawaiian family hanaied my son. I'm shaking that love that was bestowed upon me. A family helped me raise my son that I didn't know them before. So then, my son, I put him in Kauaihao Church School because it was very important for my children, raising them here, that they understood the very special place, people, and culture that is Hawaii. So I wanted them to learn the Hawaiian language and learn the Hawaiian culture just as to honor and be thankful. Then I was in tourism here for about 27 years. COVID, I lost my job. It was a beautiful career, passionate career. But then my two kids, we were worried. They were worried, how are we going to pay the bills? How are we going to be homeless? It was very shaking for us because how was I going to pay the bills? So it was either move to the mainland or stay. And I had the conversation with my kids. And my kids said, I was 13 and 18 at the time, mommy, this is our home. This is our home. We don't want to leave. But it was luring to, you know, the mainland will be so much easier on me as a single mom. And my kids said, Mom, no, whatever we have to do, we want to stay. This is our home. So that was a transition for me. I decided I'm here. I stayed in Hawaii and we will stay, but I wanted to live differently. We were going to stay on one condition, that we were going to fight to make Hawaii a better place. And we're going to be engaged in our community and bring, be part of the solutions to all the problems so that other people won't be in the position we found ourselves, that maybe we had to leave Hawaii because the price of living here are just expensive. So I wanted to lead as an example with my kids, to step up and step out. And because I do believe an engaged community is a healthy community. I have a passion to serve. I love life. I love people. I believe kindness and a smile can heal the world. I don't have an agenda. I'm a listener before I am a talker. And tonight's very fulfilling. I've called the board meetings. There's so many more people here than I've seen. And I, I, this place should be packed. We are better together. We all have a voice. We are a family. And we shouldn't just leave everything to those that are serving. So that's just a little bit about me. Thank you for your time and considering me for the board.
All right, questions from board members to our two candidates. Paige and then Ilsa.
It's for both of you, actually. Pretty much the same question that we asked before. What do you see as the one, the one major issue in Hawaii Kai? And what is your agenda by being on the board? And then, of course, the question that Greg asked, which is, how do you feel about the transferring of preservation land into being developable? I haven't a word.
The number one issue for me is we need to be a more engaged community. We are not just a community of a board. There's many of us who live there. And I would, again, love to see more of us engaged and involved. Because without that, where's the voice of the people? Where are we working together? Where are we collaborating? And then the second one on preservation. I believe preservation lands should be protected. I know we have issues about affordable housing and lack of housing. I'd like to learn more about alternate solutions to that. Because I do have empathy for those who are in this situation, can't afford housing or we have an.
Joel, your turn.
Number one, if I reflect on the times I've been on different boards, the neighborhood boards become exceptionally important and their voices are heard and understood. When they become important to the politicians who they influence, that would be my number one focus, is to make sure that I'm contributing to that. So that when the board speaks, politicians who actually vote are listening to the neighborhood. Environmental and open space land and development, I've seen more development in my Southern California. If something was considered and legislated as open space or preservation, and there was a reason for that, and to overturn that, there ought to be an overwhelming reason to reverse a prior decision when it worked. I would look at that. I would look at almost a 60% override justification to make that change midstream.
Hey, do you have a question or are you a volunteer? All right.
Aloha mai kako, avou o shalia ke anu. I did not grow up in Hawaii Kai. Shalia ke anu. K-E-A-N-U. And hau oli lau ku o ko'a. I did not grow up in Hawaii Kai. I was born and raised in Kone Ohe. And I lived most of my adult life in Waianae. My husband is from Kalamah Valley, so he's moved here, or he's native Hawaiian, but he was born in the mainland, moved here when he was two, and grew up in Kalamah Valley. So we recently purchased a home in Kalamah Valley, and that's where we reside now. I actually was not planning to volunteer. I was sitting down and kind of getting a little frustrated. Nothing personal, but I saw the lack of diversity on this board. And the more I sat here and got frustrated, the more I was encouraged to stand up and speak. So I do have education. I have a bachelor's in public administration and a master's in public administration. I worked for Andrew Tupola when she was at the State House. So hi, Uncle G. How are you? I'm not a politician. I don't, I just care about my people. And not only native, I'm a native Hawaiian, but people in general. But yeah, if you want to ask questions, I forgot what your question was. There's any other questions?
So just the same questions that I asked the other candidates. So what is their agenda, looking at the board? And then what do you see as the number one, I guess, issue in, that's facing Hawaii Kai these days? And then what is your position on preservation lands and changing the zoning with preservation lands to commercial, residential, whatever?
Preservation is preservation, so I don't think development is going to question. But her first question again?
So the number one issue facing Hawaii Kai these days, it changes every time.
Inclusivity, I think, like I said, there's not much diversity on this board.
That's the number one issue facing Hawaii Kai right now?
I think in Hawaii in general. So I don't, I see a lack of representation for the land that you guys are trying to represent. You know what I mean? So if you want to sit here and fight for our land, I think you need to appropriately represent it. And I don't see that on the board, so that's what made me stand up. So. Any other questions?
Any other questions? All right, we have three candidates for one vacant seat. And I'd like to remind all of the three candidates that we are hoping to have additional seats converted to at-large seats next year. If we're not able to fill vacancies in Sub Districts Three and Nine, we're going to be asking the Neighborhood Commission if they would allow us to convert them to at-large seats for the remainder of the term. So we're hoping that whoever does not get appointed to the board tonight will not run away, but be willing to return and volunteer at another time when a seat becomes vacant. All right, board members, we have three candidates. We're going to follow the same process. The person who is going to be appointed will need eight votes. Right now, we have nine people seated at the table. Ms. Keanu, what is your first name? C-H-A-L-I-A. Okay, so the candidates are Joel Brilliant, Shalia Keanu, and Stacy Martin. So you will need to say one name when Lyndon calls your name to vote. All right? Let's start again. Lyndon, please. Nominations, the candidates will need to be nominated by a board member first.
I'll nominate Shalia Keanu.
All right. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Joel Brilliant.
Joel Brilliant has been nominated. Any other nominations?
I nominate Stacy Martin.
All right. So there, all three candidates have been nominated. We will commence with the vote.
Please state the person that you want to fill the at-large position. Start with Paige Alton.
Joel Brilliant?
Greg Newton. Elijah Lee. Elizabeth Riley. Herb Schreiner.
Joel Brilliant.
Elise Sylvia Knott.
Joel Brilliant.
Samuel Wolf.
Shalia Keanu.
And Roberta Mayer.
Stacy Martin.
Four for Joel Brilliant. Oh, yeah, Holly. Holly Lyons. Sorry about that. So I have one, two, three, four for Joel Brilliant. One, two, three, four for Shalia Keanu. And one for Stacy Martin. Oh, Stacy, sorry, Stacy Martin.
Someone to the board tonight. If we cannot get eight votes, then we'll revisit this in January. Is that all right? I'm not sure that we can keep going forever and. Okay, one more round of voting. Let's see if we can get some changes.
Please state the name of the person that you want to fill the at-large vacancy. Paige Alton.
Joel Brilliant.
Greg Newton. Elijah Lee. Elizabeth Riley. Herb Schreiner.
Shalia.
Elise Sylvia Knott.
Brilliant.
Samuel Wolf.
Brilliant.
Holly Lyons. And Roberta Mayer.
Joel Brilliant.
Four for Joel Brilliant. Five for Shalia Keanu.
All right, we are unable to fill the at-large seat tonight. And we will revisit this in January. And hopefully, our candidates will return to try to convince the board members for their vote. Okay, we're going to be moving on to community announcements. These are brief announcements by board members or the public. Board members, do you have any community announcements? Elizabeth?
The first one is on behalf of Huinalu and Carol Jackson. They'd like to extend a big mahalo to the board and the larger community for supporting the Ka'ivi Coast Run Walk this year. The other announcement is to remind everybody that on December the 9th at Havae Heau and Kiavava Wetland, you're welcome to come out and learn about this wonderful place in Malama de Aina. And then the other one is, this weekend is Ka'ivi Explorations. And that's an opportunity to learn about, or go hiking on the Ma'aka side of Ka'ivi on lands that have been protected by the community. So if you're interested in that or getting involved with Ka'ivi Ma'aka for native planting restoration work, and I'm mentioning this now because we're not going to meet again until January, and we're going to be doing some cool work, please write to L H K H dot org, L H K H dot org. Thank you.
Any other community announcements? All right, are there any public-generated issues that the community would like to bring to our attention? Ilsa?
I wanted to bring the attention, an issue at Coco District, Coco District Park. And that is the major change in about two-acre parcel, which is right at the head of the trail to the tramway. And it's also right at the end of the parking lot, between the parking lot and the gun range. It is the establishment of. It is the establishment of Dirt Bike Park. And I have pictures, if they can be shared. It's gone on over a couple of months and has accelerated. There is no signage whatsoever about safety, or about, there has been no word about environment, environmental impacts and similar. So it just makes me wonder how this can be. I looked on the Coco Head District Park website, there is no word about this park, or the intention. We had so much discussion about the repair of the Coco stairs, which was an existing structure, and now there's this huge development, and there's no word about it. I'm concerned about the safety of the participants, and also about potential environmental, because it was a military, heavily military area. It is plain old dirt there now, and there's going to be a lot of dust, there's a lot of mud.
Would you explain again, where is this area? Is it at the foot of the stairs?
No, it's more at the top end of the parking lot, right bodding up to the gun range.
Okay.
If I can share the pictures?
We can't, well, you can email it to me, and I will email it to the board members. We cannot discuss it tonight, but we can try to put it on the agenda for January.
Okay, thank you.
And so if you'll have those pictures available for us, okay? Any other public-generated issues? Yes, Greg?
This isn't for action, but I just had a question. A former board member asked me to be emailed about the work that's being done by Kamehameha Schools along the drainage canal at the top of Hawaii Kai Drive by Kamueleiki Elementary and downward. Does anyone know anything about it? If not, I will pursue it further, but I just wondered if some of you maybe already knew something I could share with them.
No, but we'd be happy to hear about it when you find out more about it. We have someone online who would like to bring something to our attention, and who is this? Tyra, would you introduce yourself and then explain your issue? Could you turn your camera on? Go ahead, Tyra. Tyra, you're, we cannot hear what you're saying. The audio is very poor. Can you please put something in the chat? Tyra, we're going to have to mute you. We cannot understand what you're saying. Would you please put your issue in the chat, and we'll try to get back to it later? Okay? We're going to be moving on to, we have somebody here in the audience. Come on up and introduce yourself.
My name is Cheryl Montemoto. I have a question, and that is, are there been in consideration for speed humps in Hawaii Kai? I know we brought this up before, and nothing came of it, but I noticed that all the other communities seem to be able to get theirs. So I'm wondering why we never can get ours.
Well, we do have something on the agenda tonight. But it might not be addressing the area that you're interested in. So you'd have to let us know where.
Well, I mean, I kind of notice, like, when I'm in Kona, Kailua, they're, like, everywhere. So I, you know, I live up Lualina Home Road, but I wouldn't limit it just to that area. In Kalama, there's a lot of speeding going down to the beach. I mean, there's speeding everywhere, so, yeah.
All right. Okay, Representative Ward will respond to your issue when he comes up to give his report. Thank you. Okay, we're going to be moving on to our presentations. We have a presentation on the Coco Terrace's residences. Presenter is Jeff Overton and Ryan Sullivan, or just you, Jeff, tonight? All right, Jeff Overton. This is an update on the Coco Terrace's residences, which is a proposed residential area. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, chair, members. Good evening. Jeff Overton, I'm a planner with G70, and I want to offer happy holidays greetings. So thanks for this time. I have a brief update on the project. I really want to thank the Neighborhood Board for the opportunity. It was about five months ago when we last had a discussion on the project, and we appreciated the input and valuable comments we received. It's helped to improve our planning. We're still actively working on that. So our update today is that the owners and the G70 team, we continue to work on the plans for really what we're calling Phase Two of Coco Villas, is what this is. It's 21 new residences, including affordable homes. And, you know, if you've been involved in development projects, it's actually quite complicated to go through planning. And I know that you offered five months now for us to come back with an update, and we've made some progress, but we really need more time to continue to develop our plans and work through discussions with the community and the city. To be clear, there's been no permit applications filed on the project with the city. We're still very much in the preliminary planning phases. But we're very fortunate in that we have a willing landowner who's truly responsive to the interests of stakeholders in the community. We've adjusted the project to accommodate residents' concerns. We had a meeting in May with the Coco Villas residences. We reduced the number of homes from 38 down to 21 and shifted to a single-story detached home design. So basically, this would be Phase Two of Coco Villas, in essence. The next steps in our planning process really requires us to conduct important due diligence going through this. We need to carefully integrate the affordable housing requirement within this project. The modified plan that we have is 16 homes on the corner parcel of about three acres, and then five homes on an upper site on Ko'onani, which are the affordable homes. The affordable housing provisions must really be planned upfront with the city. And that's really a critical part, as was mentioned by others tonight. You know, housing is such a need. A white guy, I'm sure, wants to do their part in supporting the needs of our community. But things have changed in that the city no longer allows a developer to go through payment of in-lug fees for affordable housing. That used to be something years ago, a developer could pay into a fund. You really have to integrate homes on the site. We explored the potential for off-site affordable housing, but that's really not financially feasible for the project of this scale. Also, the city requires pricing of these affordable homes to be at least half of the homes at 100% of area immediate income, the AMI. And so that is an important consideration. So we're working through this process of planning carefully and looking at the elements of the project. So redesign of a project, and this is something that our office works on, the planning and design. It takes some time to address all the issues in planning a project like this, dealing with the setbacks, the heights, the construction type, the support infrastructure, the engineering pieces, a lot of the things that we talked about in our last meeting. So as we work with this, we also need to meet again with the Coco Villas residents and the community, not just the Neighborhood Board, but others in the community, continue to discuss these modified plans and get more input in this process. So really, given the many steps that we have ahead of us right now, it's really only been five months since we last talked, we respectfully ask the Neighborhood Board for more time to continue this work as we go through the issues and come back next year with an update to you on our progress. So thanks, that's my brief update, and I'm glad to respond to your questions. Thank you.
Okay, just for clarification, Jeff, does, is this, so there's no change from the 21 homes that you presented at your last presentation five months ago? It's still the same number, 16 in the corner area and five on the slope?
That's correct. Well, not on the slope, but it's on Ko'onani frontage.
Okay. Are there any questions? Paige?
Thank you for your presentation. Is the property still zoned preservation?
Yes.
Okay. And so your assumption is that you're going to get that zoning changed?
We would have to apply for a zone change and go through the review, come back here and do more presentations.
Well, the owner seems to be spending a lot of money on you guys doing all these plans and all these talks and all these things that you guys are going out and doing. So my assumption is that he's counting on a zoning change.
That's a question. Okay.
It could be rhetorical, but, I mean, it probably is, because it's zoned preservation, which means he can't do what you're doing. He cannot build 21 homes on that property.
There's different routes for obtaining approvals for this. A 201H process could be pursued or rezone, as you had suggested, so.
So you're assuming that you're going to get all the zoning changes to build on preservation land?
There would be permits required at multiple levels to get these approvals.
Okay, thank you.
Sam?
Thank you for returning and providing an update. Did you pose to the property owner as to whether or not he's open to selling the property as zoned, as preservation land, to the community to restore it to a native state?
Not specifically. I'm sure, you know, because Mr. Ho has owned this land for a long time, he's always had that capability of selling it, selling the land straight for preservation use would probably underserve its true value. Someone who could, if he's not going to pursue a development concept such as we've explored, someone else might take that on. And that's actually something that we discussed with the board last time, as well as the residents next door. So I'm not trying to twist your question here, but obviously, anyone, myself, I could put my home on the market tomorrow if so. He has not entertained selling the project, the property that we're talking about. He owns roughly 25, 26 acres surrounding existing Coco Villas. And the portion that we're looking at is roughly 3.2 acres on the corner, adjacent to the Gulf and Ke'alaho, Ko'onani, so it's on that corner, and then adjacent to the 70 homes there in Coco Villas. And then a small, roughly one-acre piece along Ko'onani, leading up towards a stable that would be a portion of a larger parcel. So there would be these roughly four acres involved, and another 25 acres that are not proposed for development. Of course, those lay outside the sustainable community area that's designated for residential and apartment.
Okay, I'm going to be moving this along. We've got lots to cover. Other comments, questions? Greg?
Yeah, I do have to counter much of what you've, again, proposed, and I have some additional information that I think is relevant as well. You just now stated that it is in the Sustainable Development Plan that it is destined for residential, which, there were plenty of footnotes and exceptions also within the Sustainable Plan that say, no, not when there's prevailing zoning that would contradict that. So anyway, it is not a given that the Sustainable Plan envisions that as being residential. I have also talked to city officials today who have assured me that anything on the maps that currently say residential for that parcel is a contradiction and incorrect, and that the designation will be altered to be correct for preservation to P2 zoning. And accordingly, changes will be made to the tax formula that is currently applied. Because Mr. Ho has been getting away with virtually no taxes on that three-to-four-acre site for more than 20 years. And that's outrageous, and I have figures to compare with that. On the 3.32-acre site, which is TMK, ends with 71, it has been assessed as only $1,500. This is the land assessment. And for more than 20 years, it's only been assessed as being worth $1,000, $1,500. There's been a tax assessment of $300, the property tax on that. You're now calling, and it is a prime parcel, the tax has only been $300. On a per-acre basis, that's only $451 a year in taxes for those three and a third acres. The property tax per acre, or the assessment was 451, the property tax per acre is just $90. Now, I would imagine most of the folks here pay a little more than that. I compared it with mine, and I see, and I just did the land assessment, because we're only talking land, and my land assessment shows that the humble place I sit on is worth $923,900 compared to $1,500 for the three acres that you're talking about. My property tax on a per acre basis is $3,592 compared to what I just said, $300.
Can you bring that to a close?
What I'm saying is, Philip Ho has been going under the radar for more than 20 years and not paying appropriate property tax on that preservation land. I also looked into this just to point out the difference between preservation land and reservation and residential land. And, yeah, you would expect residential land to be much higher, but Philip Ho has evidently been land banking in the hopes that we'd all forget in the last 20 years that he's been barely paying any taxes at all, and he wants it to be converted to residential and to gain a massive landfall, you know, not landfall, but what do I call it? Just major profit.
Windfall, all right.
Windfall. Okay, but this is just outrageous.
Okay, I'm going to be moving on. Anybody else?
Well, I'm going to be proposing a motion tonight.
Let me get a couple more.
Okay, we'll do.
Go ahead, if you have a motion, go ahead. Let's hear the motion.
The motion that I want to present is for the Waikai Neighborhood Board to support the existing preservation P2 zoning of two properties, TMK 39109071 and TMK 39010045, that border Coco Villas in Kalama Valley, and to oppose any residential or business zoning changes needed by the proposed Coco Terrace development.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to take additional discussion. Anne Marie, are you waiting to say, or have a question? You have a question for the presenter?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to comment that I do hope Mr. Ho is willing to sell the land. You're talking right at the base of Kohe La'pe La'pe, a culturally significant Ma'unalua, and it serves as a cultural barrier as well. Mr. Ho, you know, he bought this property, he bought land, but we're talking about Aina. Big difference between, so if you can please pass that on.
All right, additional discussion on the motion on the floor. Are we ready for the vote? All right, Lyndon, would you please call the roll call vote? Let me repeat the motion. It's a motion for the Neighborhood Board to support the existing preservation P2 zoning of two properties, TMK 39109071 and TMK 39010045, that border Coco Villas in Kalama Valley, and to oppose any residential or business zoning changes needed by the proposed Coco Terrace development.
Start with Paige Alton.
Aye.
Greg Knutson. Elijah Lee. Elizabeth Riley. Herb Schreiner.
Aye.
Elsa Sylvia Knott.
Aye.
Sam Wolf.
Aye.
Holly Lyons.
Yes.
Roberta Mayer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, the motion passes. That means that the Neighborhood Board is taking a position at this point in time that we would like to see that property remain in preservation. If at some future date, the community... If at some future date, the community comes to us and asks us to reconsider, we might do so at that time. But I think, Jeff, for the developers to come, it's going to be a hard sell. So if you would please convey that to Mr. Ho.
Thank you for your time.
We'll gladly pay $1,500 for that land.
Okay, we're going to be going on with our presentations, and I'm going to ask the board to consider the resolution to add the Hawaiian name Mauna Lua to Hawaii Kai signage before the other item, because we have people in the audience who are waiting to hear that. Our presenter is Malia Marquez. Malia, would you please come on up? And board members, I did send you a copy of the resolution that we are considering tonight.
My name is Malia Lam Kavaihoa Marquez, born and raised Hawaii Kai by my parents that got me from the Queen Lea Kalani Trust for Orphaned and Destitute Keiki. My birth family is from Mauna Lua. So I made a full circle of being born in Mauna Lua and into parents that were lucky enough to purchase Hawaii Kai one of the first homes. My resolution that I had sent to Chair and Kalama'i, aloha, board members, aloha Chair, aloha Lahui, aloha community members, and aloha lau kua i ke la. Today is Hawaiian Independence Day from November 28th in 1843. It marks 180 years that we have been illegally occupied by the United States of America. But because we are, we just go through the program and we go through the system and we do what we can to preserve what little we have left. So Mauna Lua was once an ily of Waimanalo. An ily is a subdivision of an ahupua'a. But in 1859, our mo'i, he actually changed our ily, and we are part of the Honolulu or Kona district now. Okay, so that is where Mauna Lua is. We are our own ahupua'a, and it is the reason being because of the significant resources we have. So as I was listening to this proposal right before me, my thought was Mauna Lua doesn't have any more resources. So mahalo nui for shutting that down before. I'll just keep continuing until we can get the slides just show of old archives from Mauna Lua, pre-Kaiser and after Kaiser. So Mauna Lua, let's break that down. Mauna is mountain, lua is two. We have two mauna that represent this ahupua'a. One mauna is Kohelepelepe, also known as Koko Crater. The other mauna is Kuamau Kane. Kuamau Kane has two craters within that. And Kuamau Kane looks like it's on top of Hanama and it looks like a back. And the mo'olelo is that one of the three brothers, there was Kane, Kaneapua, and Kanaloa went up. They needed some water for their ava. They sent their little brother up. He took too long. He came down, his brothers were gone, and he laid his arm out and created the back of Kaneapua. That is this mauna on the right here. On the left-hand side, Kohelepelepe is where the stairs are. That's Koko Crater. That is who we are as Mauna Lua. Now, the richest resource we ever had in Mauna Lua was, of course, our lokoia, our fish pond, okay? And as you've noticed, mauna lua.net has beautiful murals coming in from all the way in Kalani'ano'ole that actually are talking about the anaiholo. And these fish that actually came from Eva made its way around Diamond Head, Leahi. It came around to Mauna Lua, to the largest fish pond of all of Oceania, not just Hawaiian islands, but all of Oceania. And this was 523 acres of where Henry J. Kaiser filled this lokoia. But it was, it was a thriving community with fish, with pigs, with cattle, and all sorts of kalo and sweet potato. Now, in this area, there are heiau, two that are still existing. There was many heiau here, but because of evolution and people coming in, we've lost many. One of our heiau is Pahuah heiau located right by Kamilo. And Pahuah is an agricultural heiau, and it's still there. That was always given the very first crop that our farmers or fishermen caught, and you would give your offering to Pahuah. We also have Hovea that we are so blessed that the Waikai Hui has contained that sacred site and is now part of Mauna Lua. And it has our alaiula thriving, which are blackbirds with lice, redbees. So we still have preservation within Hawaii Kai. My resolution is asking for Mauna Lua, our original place name, to be shared with Hawaii Kai. I'm not asking to replace Hawaii Kai. I'm not asking to just, we cannot, we live in Hawaii Kai, we are in a community built by Henry J. Kaiser. That's just a fact. But we need to remember who came before us. We need to remember who was here before we were here, okay? And asking for Mauna Lua to be placed on the Hawaii Kai. I was thinking of, I was taking all kinds of information down, and how can we share this name? The cheapest and most economical way, in my belief, is we have Hawaii Kai on two sides of our signage as you enter into our area. I'm just asking for one side to carry Mauna Lua. I have many help in the Lahui when it comes to monies, when it comes to labor, things like that, that I'm sure I could find people to help spackle. And then if you can't re-carve Mauna Lua, we can simply do a nice cursive Mauna Lua and have Hawaii Kai with Mauna Lua. By sharing these stories, I don't even know where I am on this, so I'm not even paying attention to my paper. By sharing these mo'olelo, it's the reason of my proposal, to give you some backdrop of what Mauna Lua was and how special this aina is. In Hawaiian, vay vay is rich. When you're vay vay, you're very rich. Vay, as everybody knows, is water. So when you have lots of water, you are very wealthy. As you all know, living on Oahu, people often think of Hawaii Kai as a wealthy area. Well, we are, but we were wealthy way before Henry J. Kaiser even arrived. We were wealthy with the aina and the fish pond that thrived and everything that came before us. So. But thank you. I had really nice slides, but it's okay because I just kind of, I'm winging it now. Oh, mahalo. Of course, one more thing that's very important to Mauna Lua is our Lunelilo Home. And our Lunelilo Home was actually, the very first Lunelilo Home was in Makiki. That was in 1874 when King Lunelilo passed away. His will left a bunch of money, and in 1878, he built the very first Lunelilo Home in Makiki. And that was strictly for kupuna of the Hawaiian blood. Now it's changed. There's not many here Hawaiian kupunas left. But he was able to, his descendant was able to give 20 acres of land, and they moved to Lunelilo Home here, which still resides with him. So that's another treasure of Mauna Lua. Our other treasure is our very last piece of agriculture land. That's Kamilo Nui and mahalo Elizabeth. That we have to keep preservation. Now, we have enough, our resources aren't abundant enough for the people. We have enough people. What we need to do is preserve what little we have left for my children, my grandchildren, our grandchildren. And being that today is Hawaiian Independence Day, Laku'opoa is a perfect day to ask for such a resolution to share Mauna Lua and bring that name back, which is very important to the indigenous people of this land.
Okay, I'm, yeah. I'm sorry that your slides were not available, but I will forward it to all of the board members so that they will get a copy of it. Okay. Are there questions for Malia? Questions? Yes, Paige?
Thank you for your presentation. I didn't understand a lot of it, but I, but I, no, I don't understand Hawaiian. I'm sorry. I should know more Hawaiian, but I don't. But it was a great presentation. But I wanted, what? But I wanted to ask you, so I saw, I'm glad that you did the clarification on next door because I know that there was, there were a lot of questions about, so I appreciate that. I did read that. Thank you for that. What, to what end as far as changing, adding Mauna Lua to Hawaii Kai? Is that the only thing?
No, this is the beginning.
Okay, so what, so what all are you, what all do you want to do?
Portlock is actually Kavaihoa. That's my name. Portlock is Kavaihoa. That is, and I'm not trying to take away Portlock or Captain Nathaniel Portlock's being here for a few days in our bay. I'm not taking that away at all. I'm just trying to bring back our original place names to honor our kupuna, to honor our ancestors, and to make sure that my children, grandchildren, and all of my Lahui here has their children that know that Portlock is not the aina name for this land.
So you want to change all the names of what, all the streets and all the signage?
Actually accurate. So if you're coming into Hawaii Kai and you're taking a left right at the bay, Ke'ohole, ohole is one of the fish that was very thriving in our fish pond. So when you look at our names of our streets, those are pretty accurate.
But you just said Portlock is not.
Portlock's Haule, that's a white name.
It's a white street. Portlock's the name of, no, Portlock is the name of the street.
Okay, it's the name of the street, but when you come in, Portlock.
Is the name of the street.
There's.
I'm, I'm, I just wanted to know what.
There's a sign that says Portlock. So when you enter into this area, I would think someone would be like, that's Portlock Road when you see a signage. I don't believe that's what most people think. I think they think, and they said, oh, this area is Portlock.
Okay, so, but, so you want to change that sign too? Or you want to add?
Add.
You want, so you want to add to that sign? So you want, I'm sorry, so you want to add to all the signs in Hawaii Kai then?
Just the inaccurate ones.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
All right, other comments, questions? I would like to read for the community, the actual resolution so that everybody knows what it is that we're going to be considering tonight. So it begins, "Resolution supporting the addition of the original place name of Mauna Lua on Hawaii Kai signage. Whereas the Kanaka Maoli residents, stakeholders, and visitors to Hawaii Kai place a high value of respect for the ahupua'a o Mauna Lua. And whereas the original place name of the Hawaii Kai community prior to its development is also known as Mauna Lua. And whereas the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board supports opportunities for advancing the native Hawaiian culture in the Hawaii Kai community. And whereas the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board supports educating the public and community to the original place name of the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board supports the addition of the original Hawaiian place name, Mauna Lua, to the Hawaii Kai signage at the entrance to the community and other appropriate signage. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to the mayor of the city and county of Honolulu, members of the Honolulu City Council, the governor of the state, and East Honolulu legislators." Okay. Sam?
Thank you for the presentation.
Sorry, it was really choppy.
No, we all, we all need to be refreshed consistently of the history of where we reside and who we represent. My question is, I'm under the understanding that that land is owned by the Marina Association, and that sign would be as well? Have you spoken to the Marina Association and gotten their approval?
No, no. This is my very preliminary, just to see if it would even pass. And then my next, I have a meeting with Tom, well, I emailed Tommy Waters, and I'm going to get hit, whatever thoughts and process I need to do, because I believe my schools might be involved as well. So I'm not sure which, it is the Mariners Association, but I'm not sure how, which way to go. But that, this is just very preliminary.
So the sign came into play, I wasn't here, but it came into play, I don't know, several mayors ago when there was some sort of funding for community projects. And the community back then had said, we want a sign. So it was paid for by the city or taxpayers' dollars. And that area that you're referring to, though owned by Kamehameha Schools, is cared for under, by the Hawaii Kai Marina Association, much like the view lots that you have in different residential areas. And so it's under their care. So I would assume you would get buy-in from the Hawaii Kai Marina Association is my personal thought there.
And I'm thinking money-wise, just in my head, I know that I have, we have so many connections within our Lahui that would be willing to give time, resources.
Right, and so that's where Councilman Waters can come into play, where you would literally be doing, like we dedicated Dave Matthews' Ben Sandy Beach.
Yes.
You're gifting to the city. And you just articulate, it's written down what it is and what that gift is and what it's for. So there's definitely a process and it could happen, so, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, entertain a motion. Greg, you have a question first?
Yeah, just a quick, the original sign, I think they had to redo the lettering. Yokino was actually a apostrophe, and so they did do that. The cost, as I recall, was like $25,000, which we all thought was pretty outrageous. This was just for the entire sign, not just the lettering.
No, the complete sign was $74,000.
Okay, my memory is, but it was compared to like $800 for the Waimanalo sign that is perfectly good. So I don't understand. So I'm just saying, if you think you can raise the money, don't be surprised if it's going to be an outrageous amount.
I figured it'd be outrageous. That's why I'm looking for volunteers and people that are in the laboring works, that they're able to give their time. And that's how Hawaiian thinking is.
Donations.
What we do.
All right, I'm willing to entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'd like to make a motion very happily to approve the motion presented to share the sign so it reads Mauna Lua and the existing name.
Second.
To approve the resolution, of course. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion or are we ready for the vote? I'd like to call for the vote so we can move along. Lyndon? Twelve votes. First of all, why don't I just ask? Is there any objection to approving the resolution? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted unanimously.
Mahalo nui. And mahalo to Ann Marie Kirk, mauna lua.net, Elizabeth Riley at Liveable Hawaii Kai Hui, as well as Chris Kramer with Mauna Lua Fish Pond Heritage. Without their ike and their guidance, this, I wouldn't be here, so mahalo.
Thank you for your efforts, Malia. All right, we're going to be moving on to the next item under Presentations, and this is for the board to consider park closure hours on a trial basis for Joel Luquella Beach Park and/or Mauna Lua Bay Beach Park. The item is open for discussion. Any comments?
Yeah, sorry to be talking so much with this too. I've been notified by an individual whose son is, often resides there, probably has mental health conditions. It seems to me that there has been a flurry of concern there, generally framed as being a homeless problem. But, you know, we're just, to close a park doesn't solve anything. It just chases the homeless to somewhere else, and it absolutely doesn't do anything good for a person who suffers from mental illness. And it's just a shame that we aren't looking at those kinds of solutions to provide more resources, to really help people. And as Robert had said earlier, if they pose as fishermen, there's no way to really remove them from the beach area anyway. But we're just kind of talking and sim-. But we're just kind of talking in, in symbols and all. The real thing that we're trying to do, which is, Lisa had said, it's not against the law to be homeless. So they're not breaking the law with that alone. There have been a lot of accusations thrown out that they're all criminals and arsonists and thieves. And that's not true either. So it's just, you know, I, I don't see this as a viable solution at all and I would be voting against it.
Herb?
It's interesting. I would like to see Kalani, Iki, Neighborhood Board open up their three parks that are closed every night. Okay, I, uh, am a former police officer and I watched Waikiki go to trash. And then they, and they finally got some laws that did it. I mean, literally walk in Waikiki, smell in the urine, smell in the crap and just, it's, it's crazy. When I brought this issue up, which I was asked to by constituents, um, who are afraid to go there. Okay, we had people saying, no, no, homeless, poor homeless. I disagree with Greg. They are programmed and housing and issues that need to be, that can be done to these people. But when I, the, it started with two guys back when I brought it up. And then it's now about six tents of people. And not just those, you got them walking all over the, the shopping centers. And the shopping center management is upset. They should be here to discuss it. And, and then the police officers, you can see the lieutenant can't say anything. And they're just held down. But I know police officers out here and they would love to see that park closed. You know, when, when I, when I, when I drive out at night and I'm coming home, I see the police officers checking each park at about park closure times. Okay, so the, the people who are clapping from Kalani, um, from Kuleo and those areas, New Valley, yeah, they don't want our park closed, but theirs are closed and nothing is being said. Open your parks and we can share the tent cities.
Paige, Sam, and then our audience.
So I live right down the street from this. I see it all the time. I deal with it. The people that are living at that Joe LuKella Park and at Mauna Lua Bay are walking down my street and going into people's properties and coming onto my property. And these are homeless people. These are people who don't have a place to live. Some of them maybe have mental issues. I don't know. I, I don't talk to them all that much. So, but the thing is, is I agree with both Greg and with Herb. But my question is, is, okay, we don't close the park because it doesn't do any good. So what do we do? I mean, the police, I, these are my questions because I'm, I, I would like to see that there's something that can be done. We can arrest them. There's no vacancy law. But the visual and the, 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 the effect that it's having on the community and on the residents in Hawaii Kai, all over Hawaii Kai, and on the people that are running businesses is, it's getting worse. It's not getting better. I mean, just because we keep it open doesn't mean they're staying in the park and that's where they're building their homes. They're, for lack of a better word, infecting this whole community. And I hate to use a word like that, but I don't know another word to use. So my question is, what other avenues do we have? As a board, what other avenues do we have? And I see Herb's side, which is that if we close, if we don't close our parks at whatever time, then we should open up every single park on the island. Why, why should we be the only park that allows people who are homeless to live and camp and build structures and hoard bikes and steal from the community? And I don't understand that. So, I don't know, I'm babbling, but I'm just trying to figure out what our alternatives are. Greg, if you have another alternative, I'd love to hear it. I, I don't know of another choice that we have.
It's, it's a complicated issue, right? And a lot of the, the solutions need to come from the national level when it comes to mental health and providing funding for housing. But what we can do as a community is try to keep people safe. Nothing good is gonna be happening at a park after 10:00 PM. We had a shooting in our community and nothing has changed to be able to prevent that from happening again. And I will do whatever I can as a father to prevent more shootings happening in our parks. Just looking at the parks from Mauna Lua to Makuli, we're not proposing anything unique here. Ina Ko'a Park, 10:00 PM it closes. Alawai, 11:00 PM. Alawai, yeah, multiple Alawai parks closing at 10:00. Centennial Park, Waikiki, 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Crane Park, 10:00 PM. Date Street Mini Park. This is, I, there's hundreds of parks here on this list that all close at a reasonable hour when people should not be there. We need to take steps to prevent any additional violence from happening again. So I support this.
Come on up, introduce yourself.
Aloha, my name is Sean Lyman. I've lived in Hawaii Kai for pretty much all my life. My father was also a retired HPD. My son works at the Hawaii Kai Fire Department. I do agree with you that I think all the parks should be open. None of them should close. I don't think closing them will help homelessness. I also agree with Mr. Knutson because I do know some of the people who live down there. They are Hawaii, excuse me, they are Hawaii Kai people. They have nowhere else to go. I paddle probably like twice a week, so I go down to that park in the mornings. I speak with them. I bring them food sometimes. I think that's what could be done, maybe. You say you've never introduced yourself to any of them, but maybe if you do, that would help. I think that's kind of the problem. People just alienate them because they don't want to deal with it. My question was, but you sort of answered it, was what is the problem anyway with them being there? You said the visual, but I kind of disagree with that. Because I don't think they're doing any, I see those guys. I see them cleaning up the area. So, same with the Waianae Lo people that live right at the beach park. I've seen them mowing the lawn right in front of their tents. So these people do have pride in the area that they live, but they just can't afford to live in Hawaii Kai even though they were born and raised in the area. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, um, if there's no, um, okay, one second. I'm gonna say if there's no action on this issue tonight, we can move on to something else.
Okay, so, how's it, my name's Kaleo. Yes, whether I'm on the board or not, Roberta's gonna cut me off anyway. But, so.
Well, make it quick, Kaleo.
Let me talk. So now, the whole, the whole problem is that this whole homeless issue is not something new, right? Every year politicians run, I was one of them, not a politician, but every year you hear, we're gonna solve the homeless issue. And now all you hear is, we gotta close the parks. We gotta do this, we gotta do that. So what happens when you close the park at 10:00? Where are they gonna go? Herb was saying they're gonna go to the shopping centers. They're gonna come to the schools. So when I drop my kids off at school, guess who's gonna be here and then what's gonna happen? Now it's gonna be a whole nother issue that we're gonna try and figure out. If the people with the power, with the voices, with the money and the government cannot figure this out, what do you guys think you guys are gonna do? No offense, but for me, we're over here talking about homelessness, right? This pamphlet right here that Jean has, has him standing in Lahaina, where I'm from. 96761, that's Lahaina. You look at this pamphlet, right, it's happy faces. But if you guys actually talk to the people of Lahaina, they're homeless. They're homeless too. So what are you guys doing for them? What are we gonna do for them? Cause I'm tired of hearing, oh, Hawaii Kai, the visual, this and that. The House Finance Committee travels to the neighbor islands. Not once does it say the House Finance Committee has solved the housing issues in Lahaina. And this is the problem. We sit here in our cozy homes in this beautiful lit up building and these people have to wake up tomorrow and try and figure out where the hell they're gonna live.
Okay, thank you Kaleo for sharing.
You're welcome, Roberta. So now, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna open up.
Kaleo, would you please?
I'm gonna open up this to you guys because we got the camera.
No, we're gonna turn the camera off. I'm gonna take a recess. Meeting is called back to order. Chris, go ahead. Introduce yourself.
Just wanted to say, um, ask by some of the fishermen to, it's up to the board if, before you close the parks, if you can. How that has been.
Okay, thank you. All right, Anne Marie, very quickly.
When the police officer was on earlier, oh, my name is Anne Marie. Um, I want to let you know I was part of a working group with, um, other community members two years ago. And one thing we asked about the HPD is, there are already rules in place. There's a sign at LuKella Park and two of the things that are there are no camping and no tents. They can already enforce those laws. So if there's a tent there, they can have them leave in the daytime. The other thing, someone said, don't close the park. Don't close the park, what do we do? If we close the park, what do we do? We're just moving this issue on. And as Herb said, these, these different communities that closed park, all they did was push the problem. Continue to push the problem. We have the opportunity to have a discussion. I don't think we should vote tonight. We need clarity on what is fishing. We need clarity on, cause HPD said, we don't know what camping is. Well, let's change the language. We need clarity on the county's role. So there's many things going on, but enforcement is number one. When HPD stepped up and they enforce, there is no homeless at the park. Thank you so much. And please do not vote on this tonight.
Okay, Anne Marie, could you take photos of those signs that you say are already there?
Yeah, I have it in my pocket. I'll email it.
Thank you. Email it to me and I'll email it to HPD. All right, um, I don't see any action to move on this issue tonight. Is there, does anybody want to make a motion that we take any action on this tonight? All right, seeing none, we're gonna be moving on. It may be that this issue comes up later, but right now it's going to be deferred. We're going on to officials reports and unfortunately I'm gonna have to make this very quick. Mayor Rick Blangardi's representative, Amy Asselby, are you online? Amy, go ahead.
Yes, hi, I'm here. I wanted to give a couple of updates on questions from last month. And one of the questions that was posed to me on Friday, um, I think, um, I'm, I'm not sure how to say her name, Elise, brought up the issue of the two acre parcel in Coco Head that seems to be under construction or a dirt bike trail. I did try to get some information from the Department of Parks and Recreation, but they weren't able to get back to me in time for this meeting. So I will include that in the follow-up questions for next week. There was a question about the release of the funding for Coco Head Stables. The Department of Parks and Recreation said they are working with the new director of, um, the Department of Enterprise Services. They manage all, um, commercial activities in our parks. And they are working to develop the project specifications and release of funds. Initial discussions are focusing on improvements to a very old water system in the area. Some of you may know it frequently breaks and the water is off for several days to repair. So that's where they're starting with the discussion in terms of the repair and the use of the funding. And I have no, no further dates, um, on that issue. Uh, with regard to the Coco Head Shooting Range, there's continuing follow-up about the status of hiring there. And so the Department of Parks and Recreation said the Recreation Two Assistant has been selected and is in the hiring process. The Recreation Specialist One vacancy will be posted, um, for the general public to respond to soon. I did post in the, um, the chat, for those who are online, some current, uh, park closure hours in East Oahu, if you didn't already have them for comparison. So, uh, Waifu Bay Beach Park is closed 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Kavaihui Beach Park is 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Kuleo Beach Park is 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. And Coco Head District Park is closed 11:00 PM, um, to 4:00 AM. So, um, I hope that's helpful. Um, if there's anything else, uh, you'd like in terms of, um, closure information, I'll be happy to follow up on that too. And then I guess, um, one of the big issues, which many of the Neighborhood Board members are already aware, is finally, um, after a long wait, the, um, solar gate lock. It's the first auto-lock vehicular gate, um, to be installed, uh, in the city and county of Honolulu at the Parks and Recreation, um, in the Department of Parks and Recreation. So this is gonna be at the gate of the Coco Head District Park. They are scheduled to begin, um, installation next Monday, December 4th. And they're saying that installation should take about a week. But it will require limiting the vehicular access into the park for that first day. And, um, they really hope it will help to alleviate the impact of park users, you know, kind of congregating around that area in the community. So the contractors will begin their work on December 4th. And the gate is designed to automatically open, um, at 4:00 AM daily. There, this, let's see, sorry. As a result of the gate upgrade, there will be no vehicular entry into Coco Head District Park for that first day of installation. But pedestrian access into the park will still be allowed. So hopefully this helps to, um, minimize the impact of those early morning park users, um, on the neighbors. And particularly for those who like to get up the Coco Crater tramway, um, to see the sunrise. So, if there's any other questions, I do have a bunch of information on the gate lock itself. It's a very expensive automatic gate lock. But, uh, I, I hope all the board members did receive, um, the press release that will be coming out. I think Nate said tomorrow, right? And that was all I have, um, for updates.
Okay, thank you, Amy. I just have a, one follow-up question. When you say that the DPR is working with the new director of DES to develop the project specification and release of funds for Coco Crater Stables, I would hope that they are including the new vendor in that discussion to determine what repairs need to be made. So that it's just not DPR and DES.
I don't know if they can do that, but I will ask, sure.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the mayor's representative? Yes, Paige?
Hi, Amy. Um, I just wanted to ask you, what's the situation on the great repair at, uh, Lane N on Portlock Road? It still has not been report, repaired. It's been months now. It's actually, um, it's actually, it's dangerous. It's, it's, it's actually dangerous and it's sharp and there will be a lawsuit if somebody falls down and cuts himself on it. So I, I would suggest.
I left that, I put that in this, um, month's report too. I didn't get any news back on that. I'll put it back in.
I tried, I tried to see if there was some kind of update online and I didn't see anything. So that's why I'm asking you. So.
Okay, I'll, I will put it back in the request to the Department of Facilities Maintenance. The last update that I think I shared, um, was in process. So.
Okay, thank you. Uh, question? Yes, come on up.
Yeah, Ronald Livingston in regards to Coco, Coco Shooting Complex. I was gone a month and a half this summer, so I missed a couple of meetings. But we were told at one point that the action bays on the side were probably gonna be open by the end of summer. And now we're going on to winter and there's still nothing there. And I just heard that, I think it was last week, they finally opened the shotgun courses. Uh, any follow-up on that? On the action bay?
So you're looking for an update on the opening of the action bays?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we use that for over 25 years for training people on safe gun safety. Uh, there's really no place to play to, uh, train for concealed carry because the regular range, uh, the targets are too far away. They're not appropriate for smaller guns.
Right. This is the one that, um, Right. This is the one that, um, that DPR subcontracts to HPD for?
HPD has control of it during the week.
Okay.
It's open to, it's open to the clubs on the weekend, Saturday and Sunday. Because whenever we applied for permits, we provide, we apply to the city and county of Honolulu Parks Department.
Okay, I will try to get a, um, proposed reopening date on the action bays for you.
Because I, I've been having to find out why they can't open them. What, they don't need any changes to those to open them. They don't need staff to open them. The clubs that run there are certified in range safety. And we've always taken care of ourselves over there, and there's been no problems in all the years that I've worked there. Been there on that.
Okay, we'll try to get an update for you, Ron, at the next meeting. Um, Tara, you have your hand up. Uh, do you wanna try to see if we can hear you this time? Do you have a question for the mayor's representative?
Aloha, not for the mayor's representative, but just a note that I was trying to, uh, comment on a couple of previous ones, so just to remember to ask if there's public comments or online as well. Mahalo.
Thank you, Tara. I heard you loud and clear this time. I'm sorry you weren't able to, um, get to us earlier. Okay, any other questions for the mayor's representative? If not, thank you, Amy. I know it's a late night. Appreciate you being here. Uh, moving on to the City Council Chair, Tommy Waters's office. Do we have someone online to, um, speak for the City Council Chair?
Hello, everyone. Amanda Tabata here for Chair Waters. Um, I'll be very brief. Um, I know we're short on time. And thank you to Director Asselby for reporting on the Coco Head District Automatic Gate Installation. We're super excited about that. Um, I just have one more update to share, and that's on the 7078 Camilo Street property overgrowth issue that we've been following the past several months. Um, so some of you may have seen that the property owner finally did have the property cleared. We're very happy to see that. Um, and she's working on constructing a, a wall there and a fence to, um, keep trespassers out and, and hopefully be able to stay on top of the property. She also has some folks working on, um, some improvements to the home and some other things, so it should be looking nicer. I also, um, saw on Budget and Fiscal Services website regarding the home exemption. There does appear to be a pending amendment to the 2023 assessment. So I suspect that they are going to be removing the home exemption for at least this year. Um, because we did find out that the homeowner no longer lived on the property. Um, so that's all I have for tonight. If anyone has any questions or concerns, I can take back. Thank you.
All right, any questions? I don't see, oh, Herb, go ahead.
Just a quick comment. Uh, they, uh, look like they finished the wall at the front of the house today. And, uh, it looks nice and, uh.
Yeah, I was there today, too. So yeah, I totally agree. It looks great. Very happy.
Okay, thanks, Amanda. We're gonna be moving on.
Sure, mahalo.
Governor Josh Green's representative is no longer here. He had to leave because we were running late. All right, thank you. Um, is there a representative from Senator Stanley Chang's office here? Senator Chang's aide did send his newsletter by email. Um, anyone from Senator Chris Lee's office? Representative Jean Ward, thank you for being here.
First, uh, thank you for your patience being here. Congratulations, Holly. Uh, Madam Chair, this was the most robust vacancy-filling election I've ever seen. Five candidates. I mean, generally, we, the call goes out, nobody shows up, nobody comes up, and we had five candidates contested. Which means you have shelf life Mr. Brilliant, Stacy, uh, Mr. Patterson, Ms. Keanu, all of you. You're needed by your community. But thank you for coming out. This, it was a total surprise. Very refreshing, and a good reason why I should be very short in my report. I've got four pages. I'm gonna go very quickly. Uh, we sent the Lone Ranger with the celebration of, uh, life off at the Capitol. That's on the front page. And I want to thank those of you who came and those of you who gave flowers. The flower farmers, Elizabeth Riley, thank you. Thank you, Judy Ni'i for, for providing Sam Sloan's family the fire, the flowers and the appropriate send-off. And by the way, the governor came and stayed a whole hour and a half. Donna Kim, Senator, uh, Congresswoman Hanabusa. It was a great time of closure for a man who gave his, his life, his dedication to Hoi Kai. So that is basically page one. And to note that there, there is a beer summit hold. We're not going to have anything on the December calendar. And from there, we have, by the Constitution, on the third Wednesday of the month of January, we have our session. And it's a call for ideas. Ideas have consequences. And all of you guys have got ideas, and we are just putting that out. Page two, brought up a little controversy with Kaleo. I want you to know that the Finance Committee, when we do meet in January, it's gonna be a Maui-centric, Maui-centric session. The amount of funding, the amount of things, we had to do a bit of research by going there, seeing Front Street. Sad, devastated, phenomenally destructive. When you get even just an ember at 70 miles an hour, it becomes a blowtorch. And literally, you've seen metal and glass melted just before your eyes, as the residuals that we saw. The other thing is, the Finance Committee's been going off to the Big Island to see what's going on in Mauna Kea. I'm sad to report that the TMT has not moved the dial at all. It's still as hot as, is, an issue as it was three years ago. So stay tuned to what otherwise is the world's leading telescope in limbo. At the bottom of page two is, is a reminder that, okay, it was Thanksgiving, but to remind you that science has proven that the most healthy attitude is gratitude. So it's really cool that we have a country that says, hey, guys, take time out and say thank you. And that was what, because my daughter, after she took the bar exam, said, hey, Dad, I don't think I passed. And then suddenly she got the news that she passed the bar exam. So this little note on the page is, is a genuine surprise and a genuine gratitude. Daughter now is on the list of licensed to, in the, at the Hawaii Bar Exam. But will she ever come home? I don't know. Uh, she's in Boston as an attorney, but, uh, you will all wait patiently. But the fact that she's licensed here is great. So we're very proud of her. Uh, the third page is a reminder that we have kind of a rejiggering of Hoi Kai Drive. It's a four-lane down to a three-lane, meaning one lane going each way, and then we got a center lane. I don't know if, Herb, you're a policeman, do you find those that are better than the way Hoi Kai Drive is now? The point is, we're doing a survey. We want your input. It's one of the things that's kind of, if not surprising, I'm not sure, necessary. The other things on page three is the announcements of the, uh, the Festival of Lights that's coming up this weekend. The Hoi Kai Ultra Run. And if you're not doing anything on Fridays at 5 o'clock, we have a radio show. Mike Buck's Drive Home Hour is now the Let's Debate It Hour. Sam Sloan, I started that in March. And lastly, on the final page is the pre-session survey. I said earlier, ideas have consequences. Uh, they do have consequences, especially if they're creative and innovative, and we want to hear from you. And we've got a few ideas we want to bounce off. So lastly, Madam Chair, lest I forget the season, I should say Merry Christmas. I should say Happy New Year, and we'll see you in January.
Thank you, Representative Ward. Any quick questions for the representative?
My governor's hat on. Uh, the governor says through Mike Buck, who left, there is now hurricane season, and we want you to know that all the emergency signals, sirens, and all of this system is in place, and it's gonna work. Now, there's only been one hurricane so far. And that is the Dora that basically blew Maui in 17 minutes. So we know that they're serious. But we know the hurricane season is between April and November.
All right, we do have a question?
November and April, sorry.
We do have a question. Come on up. Could you speak into the mic and introduce yourself, please?
Help everybody to see all the traffic. Not just Lane 1, all four lanes.
You are so correct. This is a traffic jam that happens once a week with a good cause in the sense, Pastor of Calvi Chapel is feeding basically a few hundred people. But the way they're doing it, and, is, is a real problem. I've written to them, Madam, and I said, why don't you have the people stack their cars inside of the, the Neo Valley, Aina Hina, uh, Aina Hina in Neo Valley neighborhood, rather than on the highway? Because our people in Hoi Kai are going to work. Therefore, just put them in the neighborhood. And fortunately, he's not here. Representative Hashem said, you know, my people are not very happy with putting all those cars in our neighborhood. So the, the, the latest thing we're gonna do is ask the pastor, have them queue up coming from Honolulu and stack them up coming into town, so that it won't be for those of us going towards the workspace are not gonna be able to jam. Because right now, if you're not in the right lane, you can't even get into town. It, it's, it's terrible. It's a good cause, even though some people say there's luxury cars that are loading up with.
All right, so you're gonna try to address that before it happens?
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up.
All right.
Any other questions? Otherwise, the session will begin and we will give you an update as we kick off the third Wednesday.
Thank you. And, uh, happy holidays to you, too. All right, any representative from, um, Mark Hashem's office? Or any of our congressional delegates? Okay, we're gonna be moving on to board business, and we're gonna do this very quickly since we're gonna be running out of time. The first item under board business was considering a letter to the Neighborhood Commission Board to change vacant Neighborhood Board sub-district seats to at-large seats for the remainder of the 2023 to 2025 term. Uh, if there are no objections from this board, I will send such a letter to the Neighborhood Commission Office. Any comments? Paige?
So this is just temporary, then? At the end of our term, is it '24, '25?
The term ends June 2025.
'25, okay. So at the end of '25, then, in June, all the seats go back to sub-districts?
That is correct.
Okay.
This is a temporary fix to try to fill vacant seats, um, with other members of the larger community that might be interested in volunteering on the board. So those of you who were not appointed tonight but are willing to serve, we hope that you will continue your enthusiasm and come back and visit us again when we have more seats available. All right, uh, any objection to my sending a letter to the Neighborhood Commission Office to ask that the unfilled sub-district seats, which are right now Subdistrict 3 and 9, do change to at-large seats? Seeing no objections, I will send the letter off tomorrow. Uh, second item under board business is a proposal for speed bumps on Kealaho Street before and after Kalamau Valley Community Park and crosswalks at the intersection of Kealaho, Moku Hano and Kahului Streets. I'm wondering, Greg, if we could defer this to our January meeting? Or, um, is this something that you think could be done right away at, uh, within the next couple of minutes?
Urgent that we need to attend to, otherwise, uh, I expect it to take a while, so I'd like to get the ball rolling if there's objections and we can't approve it anyway.
Objections, but I do have some issues I want to bring up on it. I'd like it to get deferred, please.
Well, that's fine, because I'd actually like to give it a little more discussion, too. So deferrals, okay.
All right, I'm gonna defer this to our January meeting, when we have a little more time to, um, spend on it. Uh, the next item under board business is considering supporting City Council Bills 57 and 58. And these are bills that are designed, designed to deter illegal gaming houses. Now, um, we can also defer this item till later. We won't miss the chance. I believe the City Council will be considering these bills in the spring. And, um, Herb, well, Elizabeth wants to know if you, if the board needs more time to determine whether they want to do this or if they're ready to support this. Herb?
Um, I went to the meeting, um, at the Oahu Club, and, uh, it's pretty bad out there, okay? We don't have any houses out here, but it doesn't mean it's not gonna move in. And I think you heard earlier, um, I forget who said it on the thing, that we don't want that out here. So I think we should support it. It's ruining other districts, and we just don't want it anywhere.
I also, um, zoomed in or WebExed on that meeting, and I agree. And I also agree with what the officer had said, that we're better off being proactive about it. And we also were contacted by other districts asking for help, um, through the Neighborhood Board System. So I hope that we consider it.
Well, I'm willing to entertain a motion to, uh, have the board support City Council Bills 57 and 58 to deter illegal gaming houses. Elizabeth?
I'd like to make a motion that the board consider passing support of, um, board support for council bills 57 and 58 to deter illegal gaming houses. Thank you.
I have a motion, uh, by Elizabeth, seconded by Paige. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection to supporting Bills 57 and 58? Seeing none, we're gonna go on record as taking a position to support City Council Bills 57 and 58 to deter illegal gaming houses. And I will send a letter to the City Council, uh, so stating. And, um, I'm sure that there may be more information on these bills later when it comes close to the City Council actually taking action on them. Okay, the next item under board business is an update on the Coco Head Shooting Range. And I believe that this was sufficiently addressed earlier in our meeting. Amy Asselby will be returning with some additional information. But we, uh, they have hired one person, and they're going to be, um, advertising the vacant, the second vacant position to try to fill that one as well. And the update on Coco Crater Stables, again, this was mentioned earlier in the mayor's report that DES and DPR are working together to determine, um, project specifications and the release of funds for Coco Crater Stables. Does anybody have anything else to add? All right. The Ka'ivi Coast Scenic Byway, which is the next item on our agenda. Reese Liggett has been submitting, uh, reports on his observations, and I have been forwarding those to you. So we are constantly looking at how the, um, the area is being used. And, uh, Elizabeth, you have a comment?
Um, a couple of things. One, the first one is, uh, I was hoping that the board might resubmit the letter that we sent to Director Chang at DLNR about the renaming of Ka'ivi from Ka'ivi State Park to keep it the, Manalua, um, to keep it the scenic byway. We didn't receive a reply from the director, so I was hoping we could resubmit it and maybe include the deputy director this time. You did, okay. And I was just thinking that it, it'd be nice to prompt them to give us a reply, if possible. And then the other thing regarding Ka'ivi is, there was an issue about, uh, some use and permission that the DLNR had allowed for a certain type of a race. And I understand, which is nice to know, that the DLNR is gonna be meeting with several members from the community, um, about that. And we're gonna try and see if we could have a, a, a better understanding and care for the area. Thanks.
All right, we're gonna be, um, calling this meeting to its conclusion. We already had an update on the early morning hikers at Coco Head District Park. The solar gate is going to be installed. Uh, there is no update on the Camilo Nui Valley agriculture. I'm going to defer approval of the regular meeting. I'm going to defer approval of the regular meeting minutes for October 24 to the next meeting. Those minutes will go out again in the next distribution. So I'm going to move into closing announcements. The next regular meeting of the Hoi Kai Neighborhood Board is Tuesday, January 30th, at 7:00 p.m. at Haha Ione Elementary School Cafeteria and on WebEx. The Hoi Kai Neighborhood Board is in recess during December. And I'd like to wish all of you happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Stay safe, and come back to see you in 2025. Meeting is adjourned. I'm sorry, 20, come back in 2024. Thank you, everybody. Good night.